I'd like to call to order the Monday, February 7, 2022, meeting of the City of Algoma Council, Common Council. I'd like to roll taken, please.
Mary?
Here.
Dashlet?
Here.
Boor?
Here.
Piarkey?
Here.
Longback?
Here.
Meverden?
Here.
Paddock?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Good. Everyone present, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval of or changes to the order of agenda. Did everybody have a chance to review the agenda? If there are no changes, I'd accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Leah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes from January 4th and January 18th. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Here. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Kevin to approve both sets of meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Public comment is basically designed to have anybody comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If you're here this evening to comment on the mercy home, which will be coming up later on the agenda, I'll give you an opportunity to talk at that point. But is there anybody here that wants to address anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will close public comment and we'll move on to consideration of bills. Everybody have a chance to look at the bills.
Moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Paddock?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Piarkey?
Yes.
Longback?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to committee reports. Did everybody have a chance to review all the reports that were in your packet? Any questions on any of the reports? Hearing none, then I would accept the motion to basically approve the reports as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve all the reports.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Whole business. Resolution number 1108-2022 Pierhead Light Transfer of Ownership. Jared?
Yep. So this is the, I'll just bring it up here. This is the resolution that we discussed at the Finance and Personnel Committee. This would be to formally execute the quitclaim deed with the GSA to assume ownership of the pierhead light. This is the final step in order to do that. It would basically, under the lighthouse preservation amendment of the Historical Preservation Act, that's why they're able to give it to us as a governmental entity. We would be responsible in perpetuity for maintaining the structural integrity of the pierhead light. As well as, I know there was a question of finance and personnel I had posed to the GSA myself regarding public access to the pierhead light. As that is one of the requirements of the quitclaim deed. We, I did receive a response both from the GSA and they afforded the question to the National Park Service. They would consider a reasonable access to it to include at least one time per year to allow public access. Now again, there's that gray word of reasonable. In our particular situation, is it reasonable? Because of how difficult it is to access, I don't know. But nonetheless, that would be their recommendation to us. With that, are there any questions with this? I mean, this is kind of a, it's a big decision, but it's also pretty straightforward. The alternative, if we decline this, basically the federal government looks for basically a buyer for the pierhead light.
But how does, I tried to look it up, how, the Coast Guard still wants to maintain their light. On a pierhead that we're gonna own and they're gonna sell, or they're gonna sell, how does the Coast Guard, what does the Coast Guard do then if they take that away?
So, so thank you for bringing that up. So just to clarify, we are leasing the pier itself from the Army Corps of Engineers. We are assuming ownership of the pierhead light. However, the Coast Guard will have an easement and have right to access their light to maintain it as it is an active navigation aid.
Yeah, and so they have to keep a light there.
Correct.
So are we in really any danger of losing that lighthouse?
Whoever would buy it would, in all likelihood, also need to allow access to it.
I guess I'm just worried about that, let the public access for a day. How do we do that?
I, honestly, I don't know, and neither does the GSA. But that's why it says reasonable access, and it's entirely possible there may not be a way for us to reasonably permit access in a safe manner.
I think, I think part of it too, Steve, the way the lighthouse is designed, it's not like some of these other lighthouses that you can go in and walk in and tour around. This one, you can't. I mean, it's, there's crawl space inside, but nothing that you'd want to open up to the public.
It's just a shell, correct?
Yeah, I don't know why they wanted that in there.
It's basically a steel tube.
Yeah.
Any other questions of that?
Effective date, Jared?
So when they first sent it over was November of 2021, but that was pending legal review. So I would need to go back to them to get an effective date. That being said, if you guys want to pick a date right now, that will certainly, I can just send that back to them and say, put this as the effective date.
If it's approved, I don't see any reason why, at no cost at this, at this point, why that effective date shouldn't be the day you sign that piece of paper.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, rather than delaying that process, I think that that would be the way to go.
Okay.
Last thing we need to do is just keep extending this thing out.
That's.
Are you making that in part of the motion?
I would make that a part of the motion.
Okay. Did you get that motion made by Jake?
Well, I forgot him.
That we will approve Resolution Number 1108-2022, effective upon the signing of the resolution.
Sorry, again.
Second by Scott. Any other questions or comments? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You had another comment, Jared?
I did, just, and it's ancillary to this. It's just my personal recommendation with this. We do have, from the sale of that Second Street parcel last year, we did set aside money in the Marina, in the Marina Fund for the pierhead light, as well as, because we are able to basically classify our ARPA monies as lost revenue, it basically gives us much more latitude with those funds. I believe historical preservation would easily be an accepted expense. My recommendation would be to contemplate using some of those monies towards any repair work that would be needed. You'll see later on in the agenda, it was the other item we discussed with this, with Robert E. Lee going through and basically doing an assessment of the structure to basically give us a ballpark for, so we don't have any surprises coming our way, as well as the potential costs with that. So that would be my recommendation, is use that as your source to fund that, because this is unbudgeted.
Okay. But I think we had already agreed to set that money aside, right? Some of that money.
Yes, some of it is already set aside, but to be clear, it'd be nowhere near enough to like repaint it, for example.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All right, let's move on to new business. Item A, Eagle Scout Project, Logan Worth. Now, on your agenda, you see that there's a PowerPoint attached to that? Is that going to be able to go up on the screen?
It should.
Okay. All right. Okay, Logan, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Do you want to go through your PowerPoint and explain what you're looking to do? I appreciate it.
Sure thing. So.
You might want to hold the mic up a little bit closer.
Sure.
There you go.
Too close. So, back in, I have to think here. Sometime ago, some August, I had posed to the Parks and Rec Department a proposal for selfie stands to be implemented around Crescent Beach. Because I know that that area is so, you know, everybody, you know, that's our selling point. That's where everybody congregates to, they go to the beach. Even people that live in town go to the beach. And so for us to have like, you know, spots designated to that, I think would be really beneficial. When I was traveling, or I traveled down to Madison at one point, and I saw that they had these like official, like state signed stuff, and that's what really sparked the idea for me of like, if we had something like that, maybe create like a, you know, even, and this is after we get the thing built, but create like a hashtag almost to like, send your pictures here, whatever, and that could even like promote, you know, the efforts of the stand itself. This is the, one of the sites, and in the upper right is what the picture itself would look like from that location. And with the X's being what, where it'd be installed. And there's the second location. And again, this is kind of what I had in mind, so like, again, like that's the sign I kind of saw, but I thought it'd be cool to take that and, and they put the, I learned that they put those signs on like state parks and such, and I thought like, what if, or to have like a sign that's like shaped like the state of Wisconsin, and I could like manufacture a part that, you know, put like a little star where Algoma is, and say like, you are here, or something of that nature, instead of that, just a playing board. Actually, if you could go back. I, I think that the site's, the, it's estimated to be like a 32 inch by like 32 inch board, and taking two posts to make it, yeah, to make it. And, yeah. And so recently, or not so recently, but on, when Crescent Beach, when the boardwalk had its anniversary, I should say, I was there to talk about my selfie stand, and I met a few contacts, and so I do have support from a couple people to get this in effect. Namely Kathy Pavage, with friends of Crescent Beach, and I talked to the owner of CTI. Last we talked, she said that her son was able to help me out. So I believe that, you know, with that, I should be well on my way. And again, the, like, the, so the signs itself was, were through Travel Wisconsin, and that's again where I got that idea from, but I had talked to actually somebody from Travel Wisconsin. They said that since Crescent Beach is in a state park, that like, you know, by the time that they get to the point of doing that, like they could put us on a list for that, but I didn't, I figured just having it based off that, but not necessarily be that, would be really cool to see too. So, and like I already kind of said, so like, we, so I was thinking for that, the building process to take like, cut some of the wood into the direction, or dimensions that it needs to be in, and, you know, gluing and then screwing the pieces together, allowing it to cure. And I, one, I'm gonna have to talk further, but I'm, I need to figure out whether I'm using wood or whether I'm using metal, because that obviously changes a lot of things, you know. So, but dependent on that, if I'm using wood, you know, I was making, and then sanding it down to be the shape of Wisconsin, and then adding the little part where your phone attaches to, to, on the stand itself. And then I'm gonna have to, with the help of, you know, some of the other Boy Scouts and that, that get involved, to dig holes for the posts to insert into. And as, as aforementioned, since the Parks Department, I met with them on, in, you know, at the end of May and early August, and they approved my project with that. And so, once I have the approval, I can begin. I hope to get their fabrication started in April, and then I install ideally by the end of May. Because of the way my timeline is set up, I have to get all this done and approved before my 18th birthday, which comes up in November, so I'm pushing to get that done. I want like, end, or, I want end of May and no later than early June, hopefully, to get it completely finished. Any questions?
Okay, Jake?
Yeah. Very nicely presented. I think it's not a bad, bad plan at all. Now, you talked about one or two locations?
Two.
Two, okay. Well, you're sitting next to the guy that would be making that decision, right, right to your left. And Matt, do you see any problems with any of this in terms of maintenance, or?
I, that's always my question, and this was brought to me on Thursday. You know, I talked with Kevin, I think, on Friday about it, that yes, it has gone through the Parks and Rec, because it is here and not in Finance and Personnel, is because we'd like him to get started.
Yeah.
But that's always my issue down the road, is the maintenance of this, you know, whether they get weathered or broken, or, you know, how that continues to maintenance, that the city's taking this on. It's going on city's property. And I think it's a neat concept. I think it's a great idea. But for when there's maintenance that needs to be done, two years, five years, 10 years down the road, it falls back onto the city.
Can I say something, Matt?
You sure can.
And for you and Logan both, just a thought for you, is to check into plastic, plastic wood. It'll outlast real wood by three times, and the maintenance will outperform that metal by three times.
N E W, right?
Well, there's different stuff. Paylight is a brand, if you want to look up one brand, so you can see what I'm talking about. But plastic can be glued, screwed, everything you can do with wood, you can do with that plastic.
Gotcha.
So, just like what we're building our arena docks out of?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. And Logan, obviously you're kind of resource shy in terms of cost estimates. How long will it take you to get the cost estimates together?
I plan to get that, you know, dependent on like, you know, this probably here, within like, no more than like a week, two weeks, no more than that. So within this next week, I would imagine.
Okay. And how are you going to solicit for the funds?
So I, it seems that most of it should be covered already, like through people that are, or through people who want, who have made donations already, so I think I should be covered.
Okay. Post placement, Matt? Concrete, or just in the ground?
I think they would just be buried in, in the sand, I think, is what you're proposing, and I would be okay with that, as long as we get a decent depth that they're gonna be supported.
I have no further questions.
Lee, do you have anything?
No.
Casey?
Nope.
Sounds like a great idea.
Steve?
Nope.
Leah?
Nope.
John?
Nope.
Kevin? Sounds like a great idea. Appreciate you bringing that forward. I think we want to take action on that tonight, because you have a deadline, don't you?
I do, yeah.
With the scouts?
Yes. The deadline is, once like this, once the project gets done, I have to schedule a thingy with them and sit down with them through a whole meeting, talking about the project. And that usually doesn't happen till like a month after, you know, my thing. And so that would bring me to like September, with my birthday being in November. Because once you turn 18, it's no longer valid.
Oh, okay. Now, one thing, when he asked about the cost, looking at the material, like Steve mentioned, going to the plastic, that's probably gonna drive up the cost for you, so be aware of that when you're trying to put something together.
Sure.
I don't think there's any objection. I'm gonna ask for a motion to allow him to go ahead with this project. I think it's a great project. Anytime you can add something down by our beach, which everybody utilizes. So would somebody like to make that motion? Steve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second. Lee? Any other questions or comments? You got the motion, Jared? Yep. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Logan. We appreciate it. We look forward to your project when it's all finished.
Good luck.
Good luck with you, David. Very good.
Okay, let's move on to item B. Ben Nelson, would you come up to the podium, please? First, Ben is the Kiwanee County Economic Development Executive Director, and we've been putting this off for a couple months because of scheduling conflicts, but Ben's finally here tonight to give us an update on what's going on there, so.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah, I was trying to get here in January, but, you know, the popular COVID passed through my house at that time, so, but everybody's happy and healthy now, so on to our presentation. So, I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll kind of walk through that with all of you. What's interesting about the, when I was putting this together, I reflected, I actually started with the EDC a year ago tomorrow. So we're approaching my one-year anniversary with the EDC, so it's kind of nice timing in terms of progress, so what we've done over the last year. So, with that, when we had our annual meeting at the beginning of the year last year, we held that at Northbrook in Luxembourg. We started out with, how are we going to kind of grow our story forward? How are we going to improve our economic story here in the county? So I'm just gonna start my presentation with a video that we put together for our annual meeting, which is kind of that kickoff to growing our story forward. There's actually sound with this, so they, they had a solution with it, but if it doesn't work out, just envision very dramatic, inspiring music. So the intent with that video is, it was one, to kick off kind of our new strategic direction of the organization, as well as to be a tool for marketing for our county down the road. So once I started, one of the things our Board of Directors and myself set out with is setting a new strategic direction for the EDC. So we've had several variations of organizational strategic plans in the past, but none of them ever really got fully off of the ground. So we kind of took the approach of wanting to be radically better. So by doing that, we took a little bit different approach at building our strategic plan. So these are nine organizational imperatives that kind of form the nucleus of our strategic planning process. John Pavage is on the KC EDC Board from the City of Algoma, so he was very active in this process. So that's kind of the start of that process. To take it a step further, this is kind of what, what those bubbles turn into. So at the core of the nucleus is our purpose, culture, and value agenda, so our what, why, and how, basically, and we worked out from there. So I won't get into all the details of our strategic plan, but I will go over kind of a high-level overview for all of you, so you can see where we've been in the last year. So what we've, what we developed was four economic strategic pillars. So why do we only have four and not more than that? You know, lots of studies show the more pillars you have and more strategic initiatives that you have, the actually, less likely you are to be successful at them. So we thought this was a good illustration. If we remove one of those pillars, then the roof gets more unstable, which represents our mission. So our four pillars are business development, economic competitiveness, awareness, and capacity. And I won't read all of this off, but under each one of those categories is kind of what we thought would fit within each one of those pillars. So just for example, business development is business retention, expansion, new business attraction and growth, increasing exports out of the county, and entrepreneurship. And you can kind of read through those. So within each one of those pillars was four overarching goals, and these are very broad on purpose. So as we drill down further in our strategic plan, we get to the actual strategies and the work plans and things like that, that we'll actually execute on these things. But if we're being successful in fulfilling our mission, these four goals should be represented in what we're doing. So businesses locate, start, grow, and thrive in Kiwanee County. Kiwanee County has the infrastructure, workforce, amenities that businesses want and expect. Awareness, we become known as a place where people want to do business. And then capacity is, this is probably more of an organizational goal, is that we have the financial infrastructure to ensure those long-term initiatives. So, and like I said, as, this is as far down in our plan as I'll go. But under each one of those four pillars, we've, in conjunction with our board, have developed three separate strategic actions, which will fulfill those broader overarching goals and form that foundation for those pillars. So over the course of the last year, we've invested a lot of time and energy into our BRE program. If you're not familiar with BRE, that's Business Retention and Expansion Program. So this is really where we get out. We physically are in front of our businesses in the community, talking to them, asking them what their successes have been, what their challenges are. We're looking for opportunities to assist. We're looking for potential gaps or blind spots or things like that, where there might be in jeopardy. So, you know, identifying at-risk companies and those types of things. So that's really what our BRE plan is. One of the other things that we do is we kind of facilitate collaboration, so if they So if they need training and development or something like that, we might be contacting NWTC and getting some of their corporate trainers and things like that to upskill some of their workforce and those types of things. So with our program, what did we do in the last year? We have completed sixty-six different visits representing over two thousand employees in this county. The top issues that we have identified in our business communities are talent, which is true pretty much anywhere in the country right now. There was some concern at the political environment in our region, in our county, and obviously supply chain issues. Probably, none of those are probably big surprises, given what's on the news these days. Some of that aggregated data that we've gotten through this process is eighty-four percent of the businesses that we have visited have an increasing employee count. So there are more jobs being developed here in our county. Fifty-eight percent of those businesses have an increasing sales trend. Seventy-one percent are looking to hire additional. And sixty-one percent of those businesses rate the business climate as either good or excellent in our county. In addition to that, we've, we've done a lot of work in collaborating and facilitating grants throughout the county. And right now, this number, you know, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and change is, these are just our small business grants that have been passed through, through the county. So that's through the SBA, the Main Street Bounce Pack Program and those types of programs. If you're curious about where does Algoma sit in this, this process, about a little over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of those grant funds have come to the city of Algoma. So that's roughly sixty-two percent of the grant funding through the small business programs have come back to Algoma in the past year. We have some outstanding support on some other grant initiatives. There's a three-point-six-million grant, EDA grant in process right now going through for the city of Kiwanee. And then we're also part of a thirty-million-dollar broadband expansion grant in the county that's making its way through the PSC right now. If that thirty-million-dollar project gets funded, that will impact five thousand five hundred homes within the county. Basically, that's a project to lay a high-speed fiber backbone throughout the entire county. So that one, we're working on in partnership with the county on that one. Some other economic successes that we've had here over the last, last year and over, actually, a lot of these numbers are over the last few years. But the, in the last year, we've had over two hundred and twenty-two percent increase in housing permits from previous years. So then the remaining numbers are over five-year periods. So our median income level has increased sixteen percent year-over-year in the last fifteen years. Our educational attainment, that's people living in the county that have bachelor's degrees or above, has increased twenty-four percent. We've actually seen a decrease of the poverty rate in our county by thirteen percent. There are still localized challenges with that, but that decrease decreases need on public resources for different programs. From the county standpoint, the sales tax revenue that they have collected in the last few years averages seven, it's growing by seven percent every single year. So that's a direct tax relief to everybody in the county. And our annual wages have increased about fourteen percent over that time as well. So we're, we've been keeping up with inflation to this point in time. The most current unemployment rate in our county is one-point-six percent. We are one of the lowest counties in the state, which if people are unemployed, that also drives our labor participation rate, which is over ninety-eight percent, which is the highest it has ever been. So one of the questions that I get asked, so the, the city provides an investment on an annual basis to the KC EDC to support the work that we do. So sometimes people will ask me, well, what's the return on investment? Where, where's our money going? What is it doing? If those other numbers don't resonate with you, there's an equation that's known as the economic value added. And what that is, is it's usually used in business. It's not usually applied in economic development. However, it basically is used to measure the economic value of a company. So it's, and the funds that go into that organization. So looking at just the grant funding, for example, that went into the city of Algoma, Algoma's investment of five thousand dollars, we have an economic value add just in the community of Algoma of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So now, this is a little bit of a skewed statistic because obviously we're looking at the entire operating budget of the KC EDC, usually when we are factoring this. So when I adjust for those numbers and I put our entire budget in there, we have an economic value add throughout the community just using the grant dollars. Now, this doesn't count all of the other things that have happened, but just using the grant dollars, just because that's a tangible thing for people, we have an EVA of over four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So basically, for the return on all of our investors, the, the amount of money that they put in, if you're thinking of like in stocks, like if I bought a stock of Apple, how much has it gone up in the last year? So that's a return of a hundred and ninety-two percent over the course of that year. So looking at the Algoma numbers, your five-thousand-dollar investment into the KC EDC with the grant dollars that were brought back to your community was over five thousand percent. Looking ahead, what are we planning for 2022? We're looking to implement further down our strategic plan. Our next board meeting in a week, we're going to be parsing through which strategic actions are going to be priority one in this year. And we're going to use our aggregated BRE data to kind of drive that decision. Obviously, we're going to continue to try and pursue more grant dollars for the county in whatever those different projects might be. It might be broadband or business park development or those different types of things. You've probably heard about the nuclear decommissioning project. The nuclear plant has not completely changed over to the new company yet. It's still clearing some of the regulatory paperwork in Madison, but they are hopeful that by March or April that that process will be complete. And then the decommissioning project will really start to take shape. So that's going to be, at its peak, will bring about two hundred jobs back to the county with an annual spend of about eighty-five million dollars. So that's a very big one that we're, we're trying to get out in front of, not only for that project, but also what the redevelopment of that site could potentially be. And then from an organizational standpoint, capacity building. How can we provide more service? How can we be crossing off more of these initiatives and things like that? So myself and our Board of Directors are, you know, we're always strategizing on different ways to do that, create alternative revenue streams and things of that nature. And that's kind of where we're at, one year into the Ben Nelson EDC project. So with that, I'll take any questions that anybody has. And if there's none, that's fine, too.
Questions? Anybody? I hear none. Ben, thank you very much for your presentation and
Yes, thank you.
Good luck in the future with everything that we're involved in, so thank you. I'm going to hit the lights there. Okay. Item C on the agenda. No, right, right behind them. There, okay, that'll do it. Yep. No, that's good. Okay. Item C on the agenda, liquor license application, contract sales and operation for Steel Street Hops. Eric Dean, agent. Any comments, Aaron? Guess not. Okay.
No, I don't have any comments. It was recommended through the TPC, so.
Okay, thank you.
What is a contract sales and operations?
Aaron, did you hear that question?
I did not hear it.
Jake asked, what is contract sales and operations?
It's the name of a business, what he's titling it in.
Hear that, Jake?
Okay, so, so.
It's the same way it was before the last time that he had the liquor license and contract sales.
Okay. So what he's going to do is reopen Steel Street Hops?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
No other questions? I'll accept the motion. Move by Gacy, second by Kevin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Library presentation. It looks like we're going to have Diana Valice and Braylon Dempsey. If you would come up to the podium, please. Do you have a PowerPoint or anything that you need?
I do.
Okay.
I think Amber has it ready.
Okay, thank you. There we go.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to let us speak about our public library next door. We just thought we'd share. I'm Diana Valice, children's librarian.
And I'm Braylon Dempsey. I'm the young adult librarian.
Okay. And this all started when Braylon and I took a class and the final assignment was to create a presentation of some sort to share with your city officials the good things about your library. And so we thought, we were researching and we thought, well, we found a lot of good things about our library and we wanted to share with, with you some of the good things that our library has. So, okay, so do we turn? Sorry. Okay, well, our library offers more than just books, so we wanted to bring that up. We have a meeting room available for anyone to use. We have computer access to, for anyone who would, who needs computer access. We offer printing, scanning, copying, lots of places for people to read and meet, talk. So, and this is open to anyone who comes through our city. We're the only free Wi-Fi in the city. You don't have to purchase anything to use our Wi-Fi. And many people like to come to our parking lot and use the Wi-Fi. We have iPads, kids' area. We have job search help for people and people call all the time asking for different reference questions. And for our patrons, we offer audiobooks, magazines, DVDs, CDs. We even have a guitar that people can check out.
In addition to the traditional items that you might be used to seeing at a public library, we are really proud to be part of the Wisconsin Digital Library applications. We actually have two apps available at our library, Libby and Hoopla, which offer our patrons an array of different digital means of items. Libby has eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines. Hoopla goes a little bit beyond by having also music, movies, TV shows and graphic novels available for free with your library card. And we're actually very proud to be part of a WPR article recently that said that Wisconsinites last year borrowed seven-point-two-million eBooks and e-audiobooks just in the year of 2021. So we're not, we're going a little bit beyond the come in, get your book and go. We're trying to expand. And then along with expanding and the ever-growing technology that we have to use, as you've been utilizing during your meeting, we've had more and more patrons coming in frustrated because they can't make their technology work the way they want. They get a wonderful Christmas gift and suddenly the family goes home and who do they ask for this help to set up their iPad, to get their laptop to connect to the Wi-Fi? And we've been really lucky to be able to help a lot of our patrons not only get answers to those questions, but also build independence and their own courage to just dive into a technology and not be intimidated by it. And then one of the things that we can't stress enough is we love that we're able to provide all of this with no membership fee, no subscription fee. You just come in, apply for a card, and we'll take care of you as much as we can with whatever we can. And then we all have our own feelings about COVID and COVID-19. One of the things that we as a library have loved is that it is an opportunity for us to adapt and push our comfort zone on how we reach our patrons and what kind of programming we reach for patrons. And some of the things that are pictured here are, we started offering curbside, which is still utilized by many patrons, and I don't think it's going to go anywhere because it means that we can bring the library to the convenience of your curbside window. And then another thing is we've loved digital escape rooms. We used to have escape rooms a lot in the library, but since we couldn't have anyone in, this is just a way for somebody to sit in their living room and do an escape room as a family.
And as Braylon had already talked about, the Hoopla app is one new service that we've offered this year. And another really phenomenal resource that we've gotten this year is Wi-Fi hotspots. So our patrons can check out a hotspot, have it for a week. And I think everyone that we've had check it out has had good luck with getting Wi-Fi. And many are living in places where they can't get decent Wi-Fi. So it's been a, it's been a big bonus for us. Another thing that we have tried to reach pa, to reach people, especially during COVID, but we continue to do it, is Grab and Go Kits. We put together programs that people can come and pick up. Anyone can stop in and pick up a program. We're always offering something new. We probably have, we probably have a new kit almost every week. They're for all ages, too. We have some for kids, some for adults. Also, new during the pandemic, we started doing more with Zoom as, as everybody has. One of our programs, Books and Brews, has remained on Zoom and it's been a benefit for some of our members because we have some members that go to Florida for the winter and they're able to use Zoom to participate even while they're gone. We have a program called Bean Stack, which is an online program that people can set reading goals and it's a reading incentive. And we also, another cool thing that we got was an interactive whiteboard in our meeting room, which we haven't used as much as we'd like, but.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, exactly.
So we were very happy to be able to go fine-free for printed children and teen materials. Not only does this help us bridge the gaps, so no matter how late an item is or what kind of income the family has, as long as the items are returned, we, we wipe the slate clean for children, teen, children and teen printed materials. And through our courses that we've been taking and different webinars we've been part of, as part of our training to be librarians, we've actually been learning through that and through the schools that kids are around two years behind on their reading levels, especially in elementary schools. So the more access we can give to those kinds of materials for young children with the least amount of strings attached, the better because we just want our kids to be able to read and enjoy reading and have a pleasure of reading outside of homework and school. And then we would also like to talk about some unique things that our library is able to provide and is proud of that not every library is able to do. Pictured in the bottom corner is the Book Corner, which is run completely by volunteers who are friends of the library, which we have gone so many places with our friends. Yes, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in a lot of places and we wouldn't have a lot of the things that we've been able to fundraise for if it wasn't for them. So some of the other things that we have that we're very proud of to house is we have the Algoma House Histories, which is the first in Wisconsin where two wonderful historians went through and tried to track the history of who owned which house, when did it exchange hands, who built it, all sorts of history like that, which is very unique. I wouldn't be able to go to my hometown and ask what the history of my house was. And then we have online sources. We have microfilm. We've had patrons call from, well, we can't even really consider them patrons. They're in other states across the country that are like, I'm looking up my grandma's history on the family tree. And we're able to answer some of those questions for them. And we're able to answer some of those questions for them.
Another unique feature that Algoma offers is we offer for Luxembourg services, library services, because Luxembourg does not have a library. So patrons sign up in Algoma and we actually package up, see the package there, we package up the books that they've requested and send it to Nicolay Bank and also to IGA for the patrons. And then they can pick up materials. We've been doing this since 2001, so I guess we've been doing this for 20 years, which is pretty amazing. And in the last few years, we've sent out an average of about 2,100 items, which we thought was kind of a pretty fair number of items that patrons who might have gone to Green Bay are using our library instead. And the rest of what we have are just some pictures of some of the amazing things that we've had. We've had some great opportunities to partner with a lot of community resources, like we use St. Agnes Church as a, with a cooking program. We have our Boardwalk story every year. We have used the youth club for programs. The long-term care was used for making smores. We've used city, we've used this room for programs as well. And thank you to the CDC for their help. We had an outdoor movie, we've had one for the last several years. Part of our suffered program.
And we just wanted to show you some of the, the things that we strive for as a library. It's not always about the books that are going out of the building. It goes beyond because these are the families and faces that make us just beam from ear to ear every time that we have somebody come in and tell us about the most recent picture book that their kid's obsessed with and they had to renew three times. And these are the things that we wanted to share that we get to witness every day.
We wanted to share the picture of the hot dog kids, too.
How often do you get to see two hot dogs playing Roblox in a library? Not very often.
And we have some quotes here. One of the quotes that I found really amazing, a couple actually chose to move to Algoma because of the library. They felt like we, they were welcomed and, yeah, that just blew me away. That they wanted to live in Algoma because of our library. You can find us, go ahead, you talk.
You talk, go ahead. Well, we, we have a lot of different social media that we've utilized in different ways. Facebook, we've done an extensive amount of programming, especially during the height of the pandemic, through Facebook Live. We've tried to do live on Instagram and we've even made a library TikTok account. And then Beanstack is a way for our patrons to engage with the library and our library programs from the convenience of their phone or their desktop computer from home, where they don't have to come in and get a paper slip to participate and track their reading. And then we also like to upload some of our programs that we've recorded ahead of time onto YouTube so that patrons that might have missed it or don't have access to our social medias can go on YouTube and find some of the work we've done.
Come check us out.
And we'd love to hear any questions you might have.
Questions, I'll start with Jake.
All right, fabulous job. Very nicely done.
Very nice.
Well done.
Thank you.
Anything, Jake?
No, I'm, I'm, hats off, Kathy, you know. You get to wave too, though.
Yeah.
You know?
Our wonderful director, thank you.
Nope, keep up the great work.
I don't have any questions, but.
Thanks, we have our assignment, our assignments, we just thought we'd give you each a copy.
Oh, yeah, please do. John, any comments?
Thank you.
The one thing that I didn't see on there was the Bird City Beast Road, as you have said, at the eastern end of the library.
Oh, yes, thank you so much for a reminder.
I know we missed a lot of things, that's one of them.
When we were putting it together, we were hoping we were checking all of our boxes, but thank you for mentioning it.
The birds are gonna appreciate it as they start to come back.
Yes, definitely.
Kevin, you have any?
Thank you, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate you coming. That's a good update, not only for the council, but for the community. That's, that's a great presentation and thanks again, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us.
And you're welcome to come in ever if you wanted to come in and see it.
We'll give you a tour.
We'll give you a tour, exactly.
That sounds good, I wanna know about these housing, people that go back and trace their, their homes and stuff. I have to come in there and see that, that's interesting.
We'll pull the folders out for you.
Good. Is that it? All right, here you go. Thank you. All right, let's move on to resolutions. We have a few of them this evening. All the resolutions that are on the agenda tonight have come before the Finance and Personnel Committee and they all were recommended to come to the council, so we shouldn't have to spend a lot of time on here. But we'll start with resolution number 1100-2022. That was the cable volunteer stipends that we went through at Finance and Personnel. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion. Moved by Casey, second by Kevin. There are no questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, motion carried. Same one, resolution 1101-2022, and that is the Algoma Fire Department stipends. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by, John's ahead of you, Scott, I know there's a little delay there, but John got the second. There are no questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Park and Rec Pickup Truck Purchase, that's the purchasing of the used vehicle from the utility. Moved by Jake. Second by Kevin. Any questions or comments? Will we be getting it soon?
Yep, it's, we put insurance on the new one today.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 1104-2022, Park and Recreation UTV Purchased. Moved by John, second by Kevin. Questions and comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Resolution number 1105-2022, Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule Update. There was some changes in some of the fees that were presented at the Finance and Personnel. There was nothing drastic. Question?
Yeah, actually, after, after the meeting last time, I realized that I'm a little unclear. Or use some clarification on the per event charge as far as what constitutes one. And I was wondering if it might be prudent if we could bring it back to the Finance and Personnel Committee to have that conversation.
Oh, did you hear that, Erin?
It's nothing severe, it's just.
So you would like us to carry this over to the next Finance and Personnel?
If that's possible.
It, it's possible.
Yes, I heard that.
Okay, Erin, we're gonna, we're gonna hold this over till next Finance and Personnel. Is anybody object to that on the council? Okay, that, we will bring that up then at the next Finance and Personnel.
Thank you.
Resolution 1106-2022, Pierhead Lighthouse Component Review. Any questions?
Is this where we're gonna have Robert E. Lee look at it for $4,600?
Correct.
If this is just a shell, is that a lot of money for us to just have someone look at a shell?
It's a stairway.
It just seems excessive.
I, I guess for something like this, I have nothing to compare it to.
My point is that it's, there's not a lot to look at, not a lot of digging to do, so.
I think where a lot of the cost is coming from is they're, they're gonna be preparing a formal, basically like a report. And they'll talk about the condition of it and forecasting, you know, when they think we need to be budgeting for repairs or things like that. Is $4,600 a lot? I don't, I, like I said, I have nothing to compare it to. Matt, do you have anything to go off of on that or?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Steve. I think $4,600, you could say $500 is a lot. What this is, and Jared asked me to go reach out to Robert E. Lee to have them put something together. And I think there's a lot of things that, it's just a shell, it's just a steel tube, like Kevin said, I, there's, I think steps in it. I don't, I've never been out there, I've never been in it. But I think a big thing that, you know, Robert E. Lee is going to let us know is, is there lead paint? If there's lead paint, how much lead paint is in there? You know, and, and let us know on the front end of some of these issues, are there some pipes in there? Is there asbestos in there? You know, those are some of the things that, they're not gonna, out of this $4,600, fix those problems. But then we start to kind of set the path to how much money do we need? How much should we be setting aside? You know, maybe there's no lead paint at all in there at all, maybe, maybe that's not an issue.
I think you kind of clarified it for me already. My assumption was they were gonna come and look and tell us if it was structurally okay.
That is.
We're going above and beyond that.
That's part of it.
Part is correct. Okay, and I'm, I'm a lot better with it, knowing that, sure, for sure.
Go ahead. John?
More the integrity of the, the report is for the integrity of the, of the building or what do you wanna say, the structure itself, so that we, it kind of covers your butt. It's just so you know when it's there, so that it doesn't come back and bite us somewhere along the line or we gotta present it to somebody and we see something is structurally bad, that gives you time to go back and say, hey, we just found out that this has gotta be done and this has gotta be done. I mean, how, who are you gonna get to do it?
Yeah, there's probably 50 people that would look at it, but not go to the depth that Matt just told me.
But are they certified?
Any, any engineer is certified.
So then you got, you gotta get your electrical engineer, you gotta get your structural engineer, you got, so you could have three, four engineers and by the time you're done paying them, you could end up with the same amount of money in.
I doubt it, but I won't, I digress.
Okay, John had a comment.
Yeah, Steve, a lot of this stuff was looked at before we made the offer. There was this considerable lot of corrosion on the inside at the, where it bolts together. And that, those were taken care of when they totally redid, removed all of the lead paint. That's when you saw all of the shrouding of the, of the lighthouse, their light structure. Also, in, on the interior surface, the way you get from one level to another is a rather steep ladder with a very heavy hatch at the top. So you wanna make sure that the hatches work, they don't fall on people, they have a way of securing them, that the, you know, the hinges aren't rusting or rusted, which they shouldn't be at this point. And to see whether or not the repairs that were done in 2015, I think, are holding. So, otherwise, it should be in good structural shape. The Coast Guard still has to go out there and, and maintain the lamps and make sure that they're lit and burning brightly.
Is it a riveted structure or bolted?
I'm gonna let John because I'm honestly, I can't tell you.
Bolted. It's, it's bolted together. The way, the way Algoma got it is that it was unbolted, they're concentric rings. And those concentric rings were put on trucks and trucked to Algoma and reassembled with, you know, bolting the different sections together.
Okay, but the concentric rings may be riveted as well.
But I think if you go in there, I think you'll find that they're bolted.
Okay. Even, whatever, yeah. If it's, if it's, those need to be inspected very carefully, every single one.
You have pictures.
There are pictures, yeah.
So that.
Until now, I've had no reason to take a boat ride out there, so I haven't.
What do you do tomorrow?
When you do, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, me too, let's go, where are we going?
We'll wait till the ice is off.
We had the public opening, weren't we?
Yeah, let me just. Matt, let me just ask you a question. Everything that you were saying that they were gonna do.
Yes.
Is that in black and white someplace then? I'm reading, I'm just kind of spitting through this, I'm not reading it word for word.
It sounded to me that it was just a visual and.
And I, but Matt went into a lot of detail for that price.
If it's all that detail, I'm a lot better with that price.
I didn't, I didn't read the whole thing specifically down to word for word, but I, what you mentioned, Matt, is a lot of detail that they're gonna do. When I look at the amount of detail, then that price probably isn't that far out of line.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure you're, you're getting all that, you're getting a bang for your buck, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So that what they call it is, the report will include recommendations on structure rehabilitation work items if noted during site visit. We'll also provide recommended priority of work items with approximate timelines if noted during site visit.
That covers a lot of ground, could you clarify?
It's pretty open-ended, you know, but.
I, I can ask them to specifically include those and go back to them and say, can you put it, explicitly put it as looking for asbestos, looking for the lead paint, and whatever else, just to give an itemized breakdown.
Is it imperative that we pass this tonight? Can we hold off till?
No, there, there's no rush on this.
May I suggest we hold off and let him get further detail as far as specifically what they're gonna do?
Definitely get that wrote down.
Okay.
For sure.
Everybody okay with that?
You bet.
All right, thank you. Then we go on to Spillman Agreement. We don't have much choice in this one. This is the dispatching system that we contract with, with the county. So without that, we're unable to have any dispatch. Moved by Steve. Second by Leah. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Engineering Service with Robert E. Lee and Associates, Jared?
Actually, I'm gonna turn this over to Matt real quick and I apologize, looks like we lost our, we lost our Zoom people here for some reason.
Scott?
Uh, let's see here.
The ladies in the library should be helping us with this.
Do you need to rent a hotspot?
Yeah.
They should probably rent a hotspot, right Kathy?
Okay, so Erin's saying she hears it. I don't know if Scott hears it.
Scott, do you hear me?
He is muted right now.
Yes, I can hear you now, sorry, I lost you for about 20 seconds here, but I'm good now, thank you.
Okay, we're all back on track, all right. Engineering Service with Robert E. Lee, and Matt was gonna give a little update on it.
This is a formality that we would go through every year with Robert E. Lee that we, it doesn't hold us ties to anything, but that we use Robert E. Lee as our city chosen engineer for the year is what this is. So it's a formality. This is, will be our third year entering into now, starting 2022, to work with Robert E. Lee. Steve, this is pretty black and white, straightforward, this one.
Yep.
It doesn't tie us to anything, doesn't say that we have to spend X amount of dollars with them. It just says that they are the city's engineer for the 2022.
You're the person you call, I read through it all.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion. Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Leah. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item N, M, Algoma Long-Term Care Unit Update. Do I have anybody here in the audience tonight that wants to speak on behalf of the long, or has any questions? If there are, I'll give you opportunity right now. This is kind of an update of what took place and where we're at. Lot of rumors flying around town, a lot of different comments coming out from different people. So we felt it was time that the air got cleared a little bit. I, if there's nobody here, otherwise I'll give you an opportunity to speak at this time. I'm gonna turn it over to Jared, I'm gonna let him kind of go through the update and then I'm gonna go around the table to see if anybody has any comments from the council.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor alluded to, we felt it was time to have this item on the agenda. We had several of the aldermen request this to basically publicly address a lot of the, the conversation and, and communication going on in the community right now regarding the, the medical center. Yes, the, the city council has been considering a possible sale of the facility, but I wanted to kind of walk through a timeline here and explain the, the process that's been used for the benefit of the public. So, from, from the city's perspective, we rewind the clock back to August of 2021. At the Finance and Personnel. Uh at the Finance and Personnel Meeting on the seventeenth, uh there was a presentation from our uh auditors, Clifton Larson Allen. Every year they come in for a week and look at uh all of the city's finances, so that's here at City Hall, uh the utility. Uh they look at the wastewater, uh and they look at the the medical center. And when they gave their presentation at the Finance and Personnel, uh it was a brief section on the medical center. But they did make a comment that they had some concerns about the the long term sustainability of their business type activities. Um including an allusion to um four or five years ago, evidently there was uh the same concerns were expressed by the auditors who at the time were Schenck. Uh they were acquired by Clifton Larson Allen, so more or less the same auditors, but um so that was sort of the first uh. I don't wanna call it a red flag, but sort of first indicator uh that this was something that we needed to pay attention to. Uh ten days later, uh the Medical Center Administrator uh provided a a very initial uh rough draft of a budget. Uh to the Medical Board. And it forecast a roughly four hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit for the operating budget of twenty twenty two. Um as well as submitting uh her her resignation with that. And so, uh and I wanna make very clear, I'm not saying that those two things are are related, just that those happened at the same time. And and so that information was passed on me by the mayor. Uh and I was tasked with uh coming up with a recommendation on how to best to move forward. Uh because obviously, when you get a report uh from one of your component units within the city that there's a forecasted deficit of approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars as well as a resignation of a senior staff member, you you've got, you've gotta, you know, you gotta uh address that. So uh fast forward the clock a little bit, uh the October council meeting. Uh we go into to closed session where I first go over my my recommendation to uh work with a realtor that the city had worked with previously, S V N. Uh we had, or the city had worked with them uh in late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen. Uh my predecessor was still here at that time. Cause looking at what I, the best that I could tell, it appeared that we only really had two viable courses of action long term. Uh to be clear, in the short term, uh the cash looked to be okay uh for the medical center based on what we knew with the the COVID money. Uh the COVID funds there, uh both through uh CARES and then later ARPA. But nonetheless, long term sustainability was a uh concern. So uh we had a discussion there, but no action was taken. And, you know, for the benefit of the public, there was certainly no consensus reached at that meeting. At uh November sixth council meeting, the the council did formally approve uh an exclusive right to lease and exclusive right to sell uh with S V N. And then fast forward again, another month uh to December sixth, um our realtor uh went on a tour of the facility with uh an interested party. And was on a tour with some of the staff there. And then after that meeting, they actually uh called me, I didn't actually know that they were in town at that point, but they I received a call from our realtor. Uh met with them and and kind of just discussed very broadly their their interest in the facility. Um to which I I then followed up with the mayor and said, I'll keep you apprised of any pertinent updates there. But just that they were, they were potentially a serious contender here. And then uh right before the holidays on December twenty first, Finance and Personnel uh meeting, uh I'm sorry, the Finance Personnel Committee uh went into closed session to discuss a letter of intent that was submitted by this party. Which I wanna make clear is not an offer, that's just them saying, we're interested in purchasing the facility for what it was, uh the price that was put out uh on it. And so again, the council, or the committee rather, uh contemplated this, but wanted some additional information uh from me, so I went back. And then January fourth, uh the council meeting, we again discussed this matter. And and long story, uh long story short with that, uh still, there was not really a a consensus on that. Other than um that we did wanna now kind of go public with this. But the the only other, there was no consensus as far as the the fate of the facility. And then on uh January fourteenth, was a Friday, the mayor and I had a meeting with uh the administration of the medical center to apprise them of specifics of where we were at. Um and that so that included the Medical Center Administrator, uh the Medical Board President, as well as the new Director of Nursing. And then um on January eighteenth of this year, Finance Personnel Committee uh went into closed session for two primary reasons. First was to recap um uh some follow up information that was requested of me. Uh to uh glean about the the uh prospective or the interested party uh from before. But also that there was now another interested party looking at potentially purchasing it. And uh the current facility administrator was looking to uh um basically create an an organization to to purchase it as well. So we left that with the next steps being that uh there's now a deadline uh to submit uh formal offers by next Monday, uh February fourteenth. Uh which will be discussed uh and contemplated in closed session uh in detail at the next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. And then immediately after that, there was a staff meeting at the the medical center uh that I attended in addition to the clerk. Uh to be there as a reference and ask, or excuse me, to answer questions that the staff may have had. Because again, now that we had completed that finance meeting, uh the desire was to uh more or less now make public where things were at and what the council was looking to do. So I feel like I kind of hit on a lot of the the comments that have been out there. Certainly happy to go into any more detail that I can, obviously, I can't get into specifics about any um offer we have. Oh, I should clarify, so since then, I'm actually late last week, we have received a formal offer from a party. But again, we have a deadline of uh February fourteenth, uh and all that will be reviewed at the next Finance and Personnel Meeting. And we're also having a special meeting of the Finance and Personnel on Thursday, February seventeenth. Uh for the purpose of meeting with uh employees, they they more or less requested the meeting to come and address the council uh with their comments and concerns. It is open to the public, but that is the primary purpose of the meeting. Are there any questions for me?
I have two questions, not necessarily both for you.
Okay.
I've been trying to find out from the medical center, and I'm gonna direct this at the board. About the COVID money for five weeks and I can't get an answer. And I really would like that to know if we go into this year with a three hundred dollar balance or a zero balance in that COVID money. The second question I have is of Jared, and I asked for an appraisal of the nursing home, of which we don't have a formal one apparently. We have a verbal from the realtor who's selling the nursing home. And his reply to me was, assessors don't write checks, buyers. And I would really like to see the appraisal and how he appraised it. Before we make a decision, before I make a decision, I'm sorry.
I I can take mine first, if you're okay with.
I I can, I can, I followed up on your request. You would do that uh response at the most recent Medical Center uh board meeting. The person who handles all of the finance had her father pass away, so she was out for a week. So they are still working on it and they will get it to as soon as possible.
Um and and to your comment, uh Steve, the the answer I received was the the price was uh. Or the rather, the listing price was determined based upon the recent sale of a comparable facility of similar age and number of beds. Um and then you also factor in, uh when they look at the financials, the operations of it.
Yeah, I know all the comparables. I wanna see it.
Okay.
I wanna see the business, what the business is valued at, what the property's valued at. And what the real estate is valued at.
I took a question.
It'll be, it'll be a tough one because it's a city owned facility, so it never was assessed.
That's true too, there's no assessment.
That's the problem, when it's a private one, I can tell you exactly what it's assessed at, but it's never been assessed because of course, it's a city owned piece of property. I I that'd be like, what is the public works building, or I don't know.
No comparables in the block.
Yeah, so.
The assessor works on residential or uses comparables, you're not gonna have that.
That'll be, that'd be a tough one, Steve, and I don't know if the city wants to hire a formal appraiser to go in and appraise that piece of property at this point. Um I remember when we talked about the price, the the price was a little bit lower than what we asked.
And I remember that, but I.
So.
Right now, I just feel like we got somebody shot from the hip and and.
Well, you can.
We've done our due diligence, if that's what we're working on.
We can reject any offer if we so desire, so. You know, whether or not, is it like a home that's going, the house values right now that people are bidding against each other to buy a piece of property? I don't know if that would be the case here, but the council has the right to to reject any offer that's submitted from any party.
How old is that facility? At least fifty something years old.
I want to say it was built in the forties.
Yeah, it was in the.
I believe it's seventy.
Well, the hospital, I think the hospital part was what, forty nine, forty eight, forty nine?
Hard to appraise because it's built in the forties and it was built as a hospital, turned over, nursing home, but now.
The Medical Center ended it, I think, was, there's a former school down there.
Yeah.
Right across the street, I I believe it's nineteen sixty eight.
The Medical Center part. Keep in mind.
Depends upon which portion of the facility you're asking about.
Right, that's why I said, John, just that, you know, the nursing home, when you got it.
That was added on after the hospital.
Yes.
It was originally just the hospital, then the nursing home was added on and Gus would know better than I at Cornerstone, but I I don't know the detail off the top of my head, but.
But that's kind of a specialty building, it's not like you're a kind of house that everybody wants a house. It's a nursing home that there's only certain people that want this thing.
Well, it it's like any other business, I mean, it's supply and demand, huh? I mean, the way it's, the way it's laid out, I mean, they'll tell you that, the staff will tell you that. If you were building a brand new building, it'd be built totally different. You would have the pod system, which we don't have, that was part of the problem, and we turned in the the south end, we turned, we tried to turn that into nursing home. But it just didn't work out because of the distance between the nurses stations and stuff, but.
I like building a jail, our jail is the same way, it's a linear jail.
Yeah.
I totally agree, it's worth what someone will pay for it.
Yeah.
But I would like to see somebody put a double piece paper.
We can, you know, the task, Jared, we're trying to find it, but that's gonna be. That'll be a diffi- difficult task.
I'll try and get that prior to the special meeting.
Do you have any other comments, Ken? I'm just gonna go kind of around and see if anybody has any comments.
None.
John?
Um the first time that the administration that knew about what was going on was January fourteenth, is that correct?
No, that is not.
When was the first time that you sat down with the Medical Board and the administration?
That's the first time I formally sat down with it, but to say that's the first time they were aware of it would be inaccurate.
Well. Inaccurate from what the city is actually doing or rumors, rumor uh control?
Well, I had been sort of the intermediary between our realtor and the Medical Center Administrator for acquiring data for our realtor. And as I noted, uh she was on a tour with the prospective buyer themselves.
Who did not represent themselves as prospective buyers.
I.
They did not represent themselves as prospective buyers.
But she, but she did, but she did.
My question is.
I can say she did know that because I I told her as much.
When did you, when did you sit down formally, talk with everybody and saying, here's what our plan is? And did you ask them for assistance in formulating the plan?
The first time I sat down face to face was January fourteenth. However, I I would just point out again, there is no plausible way. It could be claimed that is the first time that staff over there knew what was happening.
When could the administration have presented any viable, certifiable information from the city, is I guess my question?
Can you, what do you mean by certifiable information?
In other words, this is directly from you to them to share with the staff. That's what I'm looking for. I nine, I I'm thinking it's.
This is Scott, hey Jared, this is Scott, hey, can I interject for just a moment with a question, please?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um the claim that we have is that the Algoma Long Term Care Unit has not made, was not made aware of anything regarding a sale until one fourteen, is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
Uh that is the claiming.
That's further claim, further claim.
Correct, that's the claim being asserted.
Okay, that's the claim being asserted. But yet, item number ten subsection D under the December thirtieth meeting minutes that they had. Clearly stated that they were looking at a management agreement that was perhaps in tuition to a a meeting of selling of the Algoma Medical Center. Furthermore, there was no November meeting, there was zero November meetings, which would have fall back on October twenty eighth minute meetings. So we're going back two months. Where there was zero mention in the administrator's report of uh there 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 was zero mention of there being a a selling of a property. So so my question is, how did the Algoma Long Term Care Facility learn about even the idea of possibility selling the unit from September, October through November, December? When it was never brought to fruition throughout closed, closed session?
Who's your question to?
I think he's asking a question in general.
Question would be to the administrator and any members that are on that committee.
Uh I I can't answer uh i- in specifics, I guess, but what I, what I could say is that the the administration of the medical facility would have known based upon the phone conversations I had with them indicating the realtor and and uh prospective buyer coming in and the information they were requesting. Um I have some of the requests for information via email, uh but as far as the phone calls, I I can't tell you specifically what date those were. But as far as the request for information, uh it would have been pretty shortly after the November council meeting when the agreement with the realtor was executed.
Can I have a clarification of John's question?
Sure.
Are you asking Jared when he told the Medical Center that we were going to sell the Medical Center?
Correct.
We haven't decided today that we're gonna sell the Medical Center.
That's correct, I'll agree.
But the knowledge that we were exploring that, to my knowledge, had not been communicated. Now.
But we did hire the realtor in a concession.
Now, if I might, we've we've had, we've had conversations publicly and in closed session about that very question. About when we were going to disclose any conversations that we've had. So it really is it, it is inappropriate for you to raise that question because as Steve points out, we haven't even made that call yet. So now you're 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 obscufating the uh 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 the fact by saying, well, we should have made it public from the get go. I believe that that's. Well, okay, so in your opinion, you should, then you should state it as an opinion. You're not gonna grill him over when it was declared because that wasn't his call to make. That was this body's call to make, not Jared's, not yours, this body. And it was done in closed session and the determination was made to not disclose it until we had a good idea of what we were going to do. So you've, what you've done is you've put the burden on Jared because all of this is blown up. And now you're gonna play prosecutor and ask him, when was it disclosed? That is an unfair, un unethical question for you to ask him because it wasn't his responsibility. It was this body's responsibility.
I agree, and I believe, in my opinion, I believe we have failed.
Well, okay, then you don't question him like you're a prosecutor. Then you a- address us as a body, not Jared, and you don't lay it at his feet. Cause that is unfair, unethical, and I can't believe that you would attempt to do something like that. I, I, I find that behavior ab- absolutely reprehensible.
Really? Noted.
So yeah, do you have any comments? Leah?
Um, none that I'm gonna share right now.
Okay. Steve, do you have anything further?
I'm done.
Casey?
No, not at this point.
Lee?
Nope.
Jake, anything further?
Well, I've got all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
But I'm not going to be, be doing that tonight because I think that, uh, unfortunately, um, we've got a body that is running amok, publishing things, stating things that aren't necessarily true, and they're not here having even, uh, given us the courtesy of showing up and asking, allowing us to ask questions. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna create another rumor mill. We're gonna get more published things, more innuendo, more ethical challenges. But I would say this. An employee of this city, irrespective of what department it is, actively soliciting and trying to buy a business from this city and representing the city and running that business at the same time is unethical in my book. You can do one, you can do the other. You can't do both at the same time. Who are they serving? They're not serving the city, and i- in my book, they're not even serving themselves. And I've, I'm, I'm absolutely livid with the, with the, with all of this that's been going on. They've disparaged Jared. They've insinuated that Jared is resigning for some nefarious reason. In fact, Jared, I'm gonna embarrass you. You know, one of the things that we gotta do is we gotta squash this stuff, and we've gotta get the truth out of here. They've disparaged every single member of this commit, of, of, of this council by implying that we're doing this for our own personal gain and profit. Well, boy, I tell you, the ten dollars a month, a day I get paid really is, makes a dent in my profit, I'll tell you that. And you ought to be concerned about it, and you ought to be questioning why. Anyway, Jared, I'm gonna embarrass you. This young man was hired by the city a couple of years ago and was ca- came to us as a raw graduate, had an assistant, uh, 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 assistant administrator position in Bellevue in Green Bay, and he gave us a good, honest, open assessment of himself. And he decide, and he had indicated that he would love to try to be an administrator in this city. And then all of a sudden, on January twenty-fourth, we get a letter, and he has given me his permission to read this letter, and I think the people here and the people on this TV and the people that will watch us on YouTube need to understand that what he has done is nothing nefarious as in these articles that are being released under city letterhead, casting dispersions on people and innuendo and all kinds of nasty, nasty things. Anyway, mayor and the city council is with mixed emotions that I'm submitting my resignation as city administrator for the city of Algoma. While we have accomplished many things during my time here, and the city is on a positive path forward, I believe that is in the best interest of not only myself, but the city to move forward with a different leader. I have found that too often, the team has succeeded despite my role here, not because of it. A city administrator needs to bring out the best of a team and push them forward as a singular unit, and I do not believe that I'm there yet in my career. It is for this reason that I have accepted the position of, as deputy administrator in the village of Wanakee, so that I may once again serve in a role where I can continue to learn under the direction of an administrator, so that one day I will truly be that effective leader. Per my employment agreement with the city, I will remain in my role for sixty days through the month of March, with my final day being Thursday, March thirty-first. I am committed to doing whatever it takes to put my city in the best possible position moving forward. Finally, I wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve as the city administrator. Being given this opportunity has been truly a tremendous honor and a privilege, and I cannot thank you enough for doing so. I have repeatedly stated that this is the best, most effective elective body I have worked for, which is why I believe the best path forward for Alg- Algoma is to find a leader who can bring out the team's best efforts. I wish nothing but the best for you, the staff, and the community. Sincerely, Jared Heine. Does that sound like a man, our administrator, who is doing something evil, something that reprehensible? And the screeds that are being published without anybody responding to? Not in my book. That is a brilliantly, well-thought-out, emotional, well-reasoned letter. And to disparage him is un- again, unconscionable.
There was no disparagement.
Oh, John, you, you, you don't, you, 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 go back and listen to your tone. You were grilling him like you were Perry frickin' Mason, and that is unacceptable.
Okay. Okay.
And I've got other things, but we can wait.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Jared, did you have anything? Okay. Um, we do have an upcoming meeting schedule, I guess, uh, so we will take it up at that point. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Public safety facility building update. Uh, we've got some dates all set in stone now, so Jared, you wanna give us an update?
Yep, so, um, everything is locked in, um, for the referendum on April fifth. Um, so that is moving forward. We got the language, uh, finally totally squared away on that. Um, we also have, uh, we do have dates set up. I alluded to it, the previous council meeting, we would be having public information meetings. Those dates are now set. Uh, those dates would be, uh, each one is on Wednesday. One is, uh, Wednesday, uh, February twenty-third at six P M. The other is Wednesday, March sixteenth, uh, at six P M. Each of those will be held at the Algoma Elementary School Auditorium, uh, to accommodate, uh, if needs be, a larger crowd. Um, they also have the I T capabilities to go over a presentation. Uh, our conch, or the, the project manager, Bayland Buildings, will be present as well. Um, so those are the, the important dates to have now. Um, uh, we ju- just got today, actually, not, I don't know, uh, not an hour before the, the council meeting started, we received an updated video, uh, from Bayland, which will be, um, we'll put on our social media, we'll put on our website. Um, it'll be presented at the, the public information meetings. Um, it's, uh, it's basically the video that was shared, uh, I believe it was the Finance and Personnel Committee, but now it also has been, um, it's been edited a little bit, including an interview with the police chief now as well. Um, so I will send that out to the council, uh, following this meeting. Um, but we simply didn't really, we didn't have time to kinda get it queued up here tonight. Um, but again, that will be on our social media. Um, so that's, that's what I've got for now. Um, there'll be more forthcoming, but again, the two big dates right now are Wednesday, February twenty-third, and Wednesday, March sixteenth, for those public information meetings.
Okay, everybody clear on those? Okay, next item. I put this on just for informational purposes. I want you, people to consider this, and we'll talk about it more at the next Finance and Personnel. With Jared leaving, um, we will then have a vacancy to fill here at City, uh, of Algoma as an administrator. I, I did include some data here from a firm as far as, uh, looking if we wanna consider a professional firm to go out and do, uh, the search for us for an administrator, or if we wanna do it on our own. But I wanted to give you that information so you'd have it ahead of time, research it, uh, decide what you people wanna do, and we'll discuss it at Finance and Personnel, and we'll make that decision how we wanna move forward, so. Um, there is a cost involved by doing that, but if you remember the last time, um, we went through a lot of stuff on our own and we feel, I, I personally feel that this might give us a better opportunity to, to fill that position, so. That was just for informational purposes on there. Now it's back to you for an administrator's report.
Uh, so first thing on here, redevelopment area number two. Um, the, the primary update there is our initial appraisals are due tomorrow. Uh, so the R D A is meeting tomorrow night. Um, they're meeting at seven P M instead of the usual six P M, but they are meeting tomorrow night. Uh, there will be a closed-session item on that agenda to, uh, go over, uh, the parameters for initial offers and negotiations. Uh, so those will begin ASAP, and the relocation specialist will be the one uh, with those initial offers and negotiations per the amended contract they have with Robert E. Lee. That was an amendment at the, uh, the January finance and, um, excuse me, the January council meeting. Um, that, uh, we amended our agreement with Robert E. Lee. They amended their contract with, uh, the relocation specialist. Um, because they have, i- i- it's just a quicker, quicker process that way. We did hear back, uh, from the state regarding the tourism capital grant application. Unfortunately, we were not awarded that. Um, I forget the exact dollar amount. I wanna say it was approximately thirteen point five million dollars total in the pot, and I believe all of it went to the cities of Milwaukee, Green Bay, and Madison. Um, not a huge surprise because it was meant for regional, uh, tourism, economic development, which those are gonna be your big three in the state of Wisconsin. Um, so unfortunately, we did not receive that. However, I do have some good grant news. Um, as you recall, back in October, November, uh, we applied for a coastal management grant to relocate our snow removal, our snow dumping. Currently, we, uh, dump our snow at Annaphe, I'm sorry, at Olson Park. Um, we were awarded the grant, uh, to basically move our dumping location to the city-owned parcel off of Sunset. Actually, it'll be just north of where we're looking to go with the public safety building. Um, so that will, uh, we were one of seven applicants to have that grant awarded. There were fifty-nine applicants, and we were one of seven to, to get that grant. Uh, so, you know, one of the, one of the really good things about this is from an environmental standpoint, um, you're gonna have the snow melting into, um, more of a wetland where it'll be able to be filtered before entering the watershed. Uh, you won't have this snow melting directly into the Annaphe and running off directly into the Annaphe River. Um, from a logistics standpoint, uh, you've got, you know, it's just down the street from the Public Works Department, so there's, logistically, uh, it's more simplistic that way. And then you also have, uh, not that we get too many of these, but every year we're good for a couple, uh, noise complaints from nearby residents. Uh, typically, they are, they are from the town of Annaphe, so you know, they're, they're, not that there's much we could do anyway, but it's also not city residents, but nonetheless, we get the phone calls. Um, and obviously, moving this out to the industrial park, I would anticipate that issue going away completely. Um, uh, other good news, uh, the south pier. Um, I don't know if you guys had a chance to see the, the news report. I believe it was last Wednesday. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers has been, or has appropriated, uh, from the federal government nineteen million dollars approximately uh, to work on the south pier, so this will be a multi-year project to basically fully repair and or replace it. Um, uh, as we all know, it's desperately needed. Um, I know when we were, we were out there, um, it was in November, I believe, we, we walked out on there. Um, and there was even like just rebar like sticking straight up in the air as tall as I am, so, um, it'll definitely, could definitely use some T L C. Uh, so that was very exciting to see that. And the last thing I had on here was the, the public safety building update, but we already talked about that, um, so I don't, I don't think I need to rehash that, but are there any questions?
Here we go. Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. All right, mayor's appointments I have done, but I, I would like the council to consider moving the March council meeting to Tuesday, March second. Um, the reason for my request is that the normal meeting would be Monday, March seventh, but I will be gone, and I really would like to be here for that March council meeting 'cause I think there's some things on there as far as the nursing home, and I think I need to be here and be a part of that. So is there any objection to moving the meeting to Tuesday, March first? March sec- no, that's March first.
Mr. Mayor.
March second or not March?
March, it's March first.
March first.
Tuesday, March first. Yes, Scott?
I'll make a motion if it needs to be made to move it to March first.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to move the March meeting to Tuesday, March first at six P M. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you, people. Appreciate that. That being said, um, don't forget any agenda items for next meeting. Our next meeting date then will be March first at six P M. Accept the motion to adjourn?
So who, second?
Who moved? Leah moved. John second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Scott. Have a good night.